Good morning. It is very loud. 10:00 AM, October 4, 2022. A call to order, meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we adopt today's agenda, I've got a couple of adjustments. We're going to pull items two and six under additional items. So, under 12, and then items two and six.
I move approval of the agenda as second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment here is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. No one will close public comment number one and move to consideration of proclamation recognizing October 11, 2022 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Supervisor Hens, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you. Whereas the holiday known as Columbus Day commemorates the Italian explorer Christopher Columbus and his voyages to the New World, the beginning of the colonization of indigenous people that forever changed their identity, culture, and achievements. And whereas numerous cities and state governments within the United States now recognize Columbus Day also as Indigenous Peoples' Day in an effort to create a path of healing and reconciliation. And whereas Story County recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the land that would later become known as the Americans have occupied these lands since the time immemorable, and...
Whereas Story County recognizes and values the many contributions made by, through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution. And whereas Story County has a responsibility to oppose the systematic racism towards indigenous peoples in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. And whereas Story County promotes the closing of the equity gap for indigenous peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous peoples, ensure greater access and opportunity, and honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, and contributions, and...
Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations, sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas honoring the role of Columbus as a historical figure promotes value of intolerance and violence that is so common in today's world and opposed to the values of the citizens of Story County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim October 11, 2022, as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we strongly support the proposition that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the indigenous peoples of our region. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
We have no agency reports today. Consideration of minutes.
I move approval of the 9/20/22 Slater and Story City special election minutes and the 9/27/22 minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Consideration of personnel action.
I move personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Faisal.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Sorry, I move approval of the consent agenda items as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
And we have public hearing items. We've got discussion and consideration of Resolution 23-22 and to enter into a purchase agreement for the purchase of approximately 20 acres of bare ground. Nevada. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, so this is...
Is your microphone turned on?
It's green. Oh, gosh. I'm glad to be the first one to test this. How do I sound? Okay, so, a few months ago, you all gave us direction to start negotiations on a purchase agreement for a temporary disaster debris site where we could stage and process disaster debris to help the recovery process. Story County doesn't have a landfill. And so when folks are cleaning up after, you know, the derecho or another event, it's important that we have a place where residents can bring disaster debris to facilitate that process. Um, so, could you move? There we go. So there is a site that we used after the derecho. We leased it after the derecho. And the property owners are now interested in selling it to the county for this purpose. It is located just south of Rowland on 160th and 600th. 600th is paved. So if you could go to the next slide. Again, 600th, that's that paved road that runs north-south. And then on 160th, while that is gravel, it does provide a pretty nice ingress and egress setup for us where we can have one-way traffic through the site. And if you could go to the next slide. So this was the site plan we used for the derecho, where folk enter at that first entrance, drop off their debris. It was just vegetative at the time, and then head east out that other exit. Um, we did lease 10 acres prior with the derecho. That was just for vegetative debris. We found that that was, we used the whole thing for that purpose. Darren had one vegetative pile just for the county's debris, and we had a separate pile for the public's debris, and that facilitated the reimbursement process with FEMA to keep those FEMA claims separate. So all the 10 acres is sufficient for that use if we had a larger-scale disaster with different types of debris, construction, demolition, household hazardous wastes, white goods. We'd need to separate those piles out to ensure we're not mixing and commingling debris types, and we can recycle them appropriately. And so, you know, since 2015, we've been working on this and done different scenarios where, you know, subdivisions north of Ames are hit with a tornado or Fernald experiences a flood and found that, you know, 15 acres would be sufficient. But I think with the access, the way this is configured, and the potential for secondary roads to use this for storage of gravel or other materials, the 20 acres makes sense. So, with the, Chair Faisal led the negotiations, and I and Ethan assisted, and we also had Wayne, the county assessor, assist. So the purchase agreement you see before you, I'll just briefly go through some of the contingencies. Otherwise, it's a pretty, the typical purchase agreement the county uses. So the, the purchase agreement specifies that we're purchasing 20 acres to be determined by survey. We are purchasing it for a price of $10,000 per acre. So that's $200,000. The contingencies are that we receive a conditional use permit from ourselves, the Story County Board of Adjustment. We do need a permit for this use, and we will seek that after we've developed a site plan and debris plan with the help of a consultant. We also will be constructing a perimeter barrier around the site. The, the property owners prefer an earthen berm for this use. We could, you know, scrape the surface. There's some gravel and possibly, you know, construct one out of that material. We've also been talking with the Soybean Association about doing a rusty patch bumblebee planting on the barrier. So there's different options there. And then a deed restriction was also requested by the property owners that this is not used for a permanent landfill site. And, and that's not our intent here. We're not going to dispose permanently of debris on this site. Just sort it and then take it elsewhere for final disposal. And then the, the closing costs, we did calculate this out. Ethan helped me, and I contacted a few surveyors. So we'll pay up to $2,500 in closing costs. And that's what would include abstracting, survey, and transfer tax. Any questions on the contents of the purchase agreement? The seller did also include the right to leave the agreement. Gosh, Ethan's gonna have to help me with my legal language, but if we don't get our permit by July of next year, hopefully we'll get it sooner than that before, before hazardous weather. Next slide. I did, just in case there were questions, we did work with the assessor to look at sales prices of farmland. So this is just a map of the Milford farmland sales that occurred recently, and these were all included for several townships in your packet as well. Next slide. And so after this, if we enter into the agreement, we will bring back an RFP for a consultant to help us create a site plan to appropriately separate and prepare the goods and prepare the site. Think about, do we need a barrier here? What kind of, do we need roll-off trailers, that kind of thing? And then we'll, we'll seek a conditional use permit with the Board of Adjustment once those details are worked out. And then we can close. Currently, the, the cost of the site is unbudgeted, since this was on my work program, which we set in February. I didn't budget for it back in October. So we could either amend the current fiscal year budget or we could budget for it this year and plan to pay for it at the beginning of next fiscal year. But again, I think at this point, we've been working on this for seven years and want to get this done before there's severe weather that we need a site for. So that would be the first alternative on your screen, approving the purchase agreement. Questions for me or Ethan?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. I remember when Planning and Development, when you and Jerry Moore, your processor, worked on getting this site right after the derecho and you did some very fast work, which was needed because we needed to get people not putting brush out in the county right away. And I visited it a few times, and it did work really well. And I even talked to some people who were dropping off, people who'd lost windbreaks and were dropping off a whole lot of debris, and they were still grateful for it. And we were fortunate then because Homeland Security came and did the chipping, so we didn't have to burn. I understand we can legally only burn on the west half in terms of how close it is to residents, and I think that should be sufficient. You know, it's a good-sized place, and I really like the fact it's off a paved road. You know, there's a short piece of gravel, but you've got that long U. So you can even have people, you know, if you've got a lot of people dropping stuff off, you can even have, you know, cars lined up there off of the road, which is a good thing. I, I think it'd be set up really well, and I'm, my only reservation is I had hoped that we would get a debris site closer to the center of the county, but I know that, you know, the, the land, I know the land that was available there wasn't appropriate for it, and there were some other concerns. So knowing that this worked really well after the derecho, I'm very supportive of it. I just do want to make sure that we can do white goods. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about tornado and, you know, everything that Marshalltown went through after that. And we've got, you know, people have to have a place to take that stuff. And we have a lot of homes in unincorporated areas, so they can, any, anything could be there temporarily.
Yes, so that's not limited by the purchase agreement at all. And I, I, that's part of the process where we're going to have a consultant come in and create a plan to make sure we've got appropriate roll-off trailers, so we're not putting white goods that could leak on the ground and making sure we're prepared to handle all sorts of debris.
I want to thank you again for the work you did in 2020 and the work you've done for several years trying to find this site. And I think this, I think this will be very satisfactory.
Thanks.
And I think that the residents, the unincorporated areas, will appreciate it. I, I don't know how you're gonna monitor it. That's the other thing that comes up. But I trust you and your staff will put together a plan there.
Yeah. Um, I think before with the derecho, there wasn't as much concern because it was a newer site, but that's definitely part of the plan as well with the consultant that we'd be looking at, you know, is the perimeter barrier sufficient? Do we need locking gates? Do we need a camera? What kind of lighting?
There are certain hours, is it gonna be staff?
Oh, yeah. We, so what we did with the derecho is when it's open for the public after a resolution declaring a disaster, then we have staff sign up for different hours, and then we establish those. Those are the hours where the public can drop off. And that way, we can look at the loads and take sizes and addresses, so we're reimbursed for the costs through FEMA if it is a presidentially declared disaster.
And can control what's being brought in.
Yeah, exactly. I'll thank you for your work.
Yeah, I, I want to say thank you to the book. A lot of work went into getting this done, so thank you for all of, all of what you've done so far. Any other questions?
I would move...
No, it's a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Public hearing.
Always forget that.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night.
We'll open public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment? Can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. We've got a few people on, so wait just a minute.
I believe the property owners are on Zoom too, if you have questions.
Thank you. Okay, doesn't look like we have any, any public comment. So we'll close public hearing. Anything further?
Okay, then. I will move that we approve Resolution 23-22 to enter into a purchase agreement for the purchase of approximately 20 acres of bare ground. Exact description be determined by abstract and new plot of survey. Counted property locally known as 616 160th Street, Nevada, Iowa, for the amount of $200,000, and authorize the signature upon the purchase agreement and all other necessary documentation to effectuate the purchase by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll come back with a budget amendment and some more updates on the RFP as well. So that are, we'll talk about that next. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia.
And, and thank you to the landowners for their willingness to work with us all this time as well. Moving on to additional items, we have discussion and consideration of proposal for design and construction administration costs for the administration and engineers' building generator project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Joe.
And what we got this morning for discussion and consideration is the proposal we received for engineering and design and feasibility services for increasing the generator capacity size for this building and potentially moving the existing generator here to the engineers' complex. We did a mandatory walkthrough a couple of weeks ago. We did have four workers at that walkthrough, two of which were just straight engineering firms, and they gave their proposals to RMH Architects. And then the other one was APE. They're, they're out of Des Moines, but we ultimately only received one proposal on the deadline from RMH Architects. The cost, $45,400, is under budget for what we had for engineering and design service fees. We have experience with RMH, and they are using Brewer Engineering, their engineering firm consultant. Brewer Engineering, we've used to, we're using that onto existing projects now, so... I have all the faith that they are more than capable of doing the work. I feel the reason that we only received one proposal is equipment delays to drag, well, we'll ultimately drag the project out. Like currently, generator of this size has got a 36 to 52-week lead time. And electrical equipment's got six to eight-month lead times on it. So I think ultimately that is why we only received one proposal. Questions?
This will also include the engineering for the current generator going over.
Correct. Yep.
But that's gonna be a good reuse.
Yep, yeah, because initial, when this project started about three, four years ago, you know, we looked for FEMA grant funding for it, and those fell through, and then ultimately became an ARPA project that's budgeted for right now. We inquired about trade-in value of our current generator, given the fact that relocating it basically come down to that they would give us about $4,000 to trade it in. So that's when we started looking at where it could be utilized at other places. So the engineers' complex, talking with Darren, then we felt that would be a good place to have it, because it would also include not just the engineers' building, but their maintenance shop in the back, so.
Oh, good.
Their trucks.
That's my question is whether they would get all the...
It wouldn't do the entire complex, but it would do the main engineers' building and their big shop in the back, so.
Just reassuring.
Good.
Other questions?
I would move that we approve the proposal for design and construction administration costs for the administration and engineers' building generator project proposed at $45,400.
Second. Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, for all your work on this.
Uh, next, we have discussion and consideration of Resolution 23-29, authorizing placement of a stop sign at the intersection of 310th Street and 560th Avenue. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning. Got the intersection pulled up here on the screen. We're just northeast of Huxley up here is the intersection. This is 310th and 560th is kind of a curvy road here by Dream Lake. Um, we just recently completed some major regrade work on 310th, fixing that road up, and the last step is to add the stop sign here. It's a T-intersection. We generally don't like to put stop signs at Ts because people generally stop anyway. This is a bit of a unique intersection. It's, uh, 310th is very steep coming down to 560th. You're coming down a hill, and then there's, there's a hill right here that kind of blocks your view of the traffic coming that direction. So people don't like to stop when they get, they like to just keep on going, and then you can't see very well. So there has been three accidents in the past 10 years. And two of them were head injuries involved, so they're fairly severe. So we had, got some requests as well from landlords to the north to add the stop sign, so. And the traffic counts are fairly high for a gravel road. We got 100 vehicles a day here and 260 vehicles a day on this, so. With all those things considered, I would recommend we add a stop sign at this intersection just for eastbound traffic.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
No question.
I would move approval of Resolution 23.29, authorizing erection, erection of a stop sign for the eastbound traffic on 310th Street at its intersection with 560th Avenue.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Next, we have discussion and consideration of Resolution 23-30, authorizing placement of a speed limit sign on 250th Street, starting at 670th Avenue, the intersection of 680th.
Okay, uh, this request came in from a landowner. I got a nice four-page letter here from Dan Burgeland. I believe he lives in the trailer park right here. This is Hickory Grove Lake Complex. There are no speed limits on these three legs around Hickory Grove, but this one does have, I believe, a 30 mile an hour speed limit, mostly because of the curves. So the request is to put a speed limit on this road as it's 55 right now. We get a lot of walkers coming from the trailer park over to Hickory Grove Lake and a lot of traffic coming into the Hickory Grove Complex. Just to point out some of his concerns. A lot of young children playing and biking on the road coming from Hickory Grove. There's a school bus turnaround in the area. Several burnout. It must be kind of a racetrack, be in a straight section there. Burnout marks, and you hear them racing out there quite often. And then the walkers, there's a, there's tree line here coming up the hill, and the walkers are kind of shaded, and there's really not much width for a shoulder to walk on, so they walk on the pavement, and it's kind of blind at times, looking into the sun and being shaded from the trees, so. And when I went up to look at it, there was a walker right exactly where he said the issue is, and I do agree that it's a bit of concern. Originally, I was gonna try to isolate the 45 in this area, but I don't know, it was five to 10 years ago. We changed the stop sign configuration here. It used to stop this direction, and now we had somebody request we stop this direction. So east-west traffic does stop here, and it stops at the other end. So I extended the 45 the entire way because people really shouldn't be getting up 55 when they gotta stop real soon anyway. So we just went ahead and recommending the whole mile stretch be 5. I did check with Mike Cox as well, and he was supportive of making that stretch 45, so. I recommend we make that one-mile stretch of 250th Street at 45 miles an hour.
My only question, Darren, is I had, you said the other two areas have been limits, have they not needed?
I don't believe so. This one's, uh, doesn't get as much traffic, and it's a through route. There's no stop condition there.
Okay.
Any houses or anything on it. This one's fairly similar, no housing or not many people walking, and there's a separated trail here, so they don't need to walk on the shoulder or anything.
Okay.
This time, I don't think necessary.
Okay, okay. That was the only question I had.
Any questions?
I would move approval of Resolution 23-30, authorizing the placement of a speed limit sign on 250th Street, starting at 670th Avenue to the intersection of 680th Avenue.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Next, we have discussion and consideration of Resolution 23-31, authorizing placement of a speed limit sign on Washington Carver.
This is a, a speed limit area that we've kept an eye on for a number of years. We talked about this, I think it was five years ago, and at that time, some residents had heard we were thinking about doing it and really didn't want us to slow traffic down, but the area just keeps building, and Ames just recently annexed this area here, and that's gonna develop with a lot of homes and other, possibly church or something out there as well. So it's gonna continue to increase, so. Getting more and more requests now from the irons and other people that we need to slow the traffic down to that intersection. We are, have been talking to the city for a number of years now about adding stoplights, and there is a plan to add temporary stoplights there in the next year or two, which will help as well. But I indicated to the complaints that have come in recently that we would try to get a 45 up probably by the end of the year if we could. I'm extending it up past West 190th here. This intersection, site this isn't great looking to the north, so we can slow them down before they get to that. That's gonna help. And then we get down to Cameron School Road. Half of that's the city of Ames, so they have agreed that the 45 looked reasonable to them as well, so they will copy our resolution. But we won't be able to post it until the city does theirs, so it could be a while for it gets posted. But as soon as the city gets theirs to match it, we will get the signs up. There is an intersection study being done by the city of Ames right now, but they're only doing that for West 190th intersections. They're not coming down to do this one. So initially, I was gonna wait for that study, but it's not really studying this area. So I think it's appropriate, we just move forward with that. 45 now, it's, it's only gonna continue to increase in traffic and more and more development out there, so I think it's the time to do it.
Darren, I would agree. I've seen the developer agreement on the Carver and Cameron, and it's gonna add some turn lanes and some other things.
Yeah.
What all, but it's, it's gonna be a more... What all, but it's, it's going to be a more complicated intersection and it's a dangerous intersection now just because people don't like to stop there and wait for the traffic. So I think just looking ahead, that's good. I'm also glad you're extending it north of 190th because I know that hill there very well. There's limited visibility there. I don't know how many times I've come over that, you know, come over that little hill. And all of a sudden I see a bicycle in front of me. I was really glad when the county paved Hyde because there's less bike traffic. But at the same time, that, that can be dangerous. I'm even wondering if a limited visibility sign might be good on that. I don't, I don't know. The, that's your expertise, but I've been concerned about that intersection for a long time.
It already has a intersection sign warning you there's intersection coming up. We don't have very many of those, so there is a warning sign out there now that we typically don't have out there, warning you to watch out for the intersection. And then this will just add an additional component, 45.
And it'll be interesting to see what the, uh, study, the NPO study says about this intersection, what other options there might be for it. As well as the Hyde and 190th and 69th and 190th, so. No, I think it's a, I think it's a good plan.
Yeah, I think so too, and I concur because I, lies 190th, you get onto George Washington Carver a lot. And you look to the north and you almost have to pull your car out a little bit further than you want to be able to see that there's no additional traffic coming.
I just commented, in the meantime, this is probably the only area I was a little concerned about slowing traffic to 45, uh, because there isn't anything built up in here yet, but it's coming soon. And it really didn't feel as bad as I thought it would driving 45 through there. Sometimes it feels like you're going really slow out on the open area. Is it 45? But it didn't feel terrible, but we could get some comments and why is it necessary here? And it's basically planning ahead for what's to come.
Right, and it's basically open and then it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can't say go up to 55, go down to 45 again and back out, so I think it's good. Yeah. Um, what's the number? Hold on a second. Ready for motion?
I'm reached out, yes.
Okay, I would move the adoption of Resolution 23-31 authorizing placement of a speed limit sign on GW Carver, beginning 750 feet north of West 190th, running south, 2,650 feet south of Cameron School Road.
Did you say 2,650 feet or 2,630?
I hope I said 2,630. If not, I'll correct it.
Okay, second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that one.
Uh, moving to departmental reports, planning and development quarterly report.
Okay, so this is the, um, third quarter already. Next slide. So our permits are still down. The economy and inflation and interest rates, not a lot of new houses being built. Um, that said, and you can't see it because of the share screen. The valuation of the dwellings being constructed is still very, very high. Um, higher than in past years. Um, so we had 26 permits total. And then if you could go to the next slide. They really were though, pretty well distributed throughout the county. Um, next slide. And then in terms of type, we did have a lot of additions, so folks are building on to their homes. Um, solar arrays were fewer than we normally see. Um, and then again, dwellings, we had four for the quarter. In terms of development cases, um, those were also limited. We had three subdivisions to create, um, one new lot each. And then we had, um, Y S F, this conditional use permit modification. And they changed their site plan, so we went back to the Board of Adjustment, um, with a new site plan for them. Um, we are still getting a lot of inquiries though, so one way we track this is with property research. So that's when somebody wants to know if they can divide their property, um, once into two to build a second dwelling or if a property is buildable for a dwelling at all. Um, those numbers are higher than we've seen in past third quarters. And similarly, we've had a lot of conceptual review meetings for larger types of development. We've got one tomorrow, for instance, to do a new subdivision south of Nevada. Um, so there is still interest in other larger types of development. We just haven't seen those applications actually come through. Um, we did have two new interns start this quarter. Um, they're here on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Um, and then I did pass the certified floodplain management exam. So we'll, I'm going to be working with Leanne on, um, kind of transitioning some community rating system. Um, the tasks that are currently assigned to her over to us. And that, the community rating system again is a voluntary program. We participate in through, um, the National Flood Insurance, um, program that gives Story County residents a discount of 15% on flood insurance policies because we go above minimum standards. Um, and then we are also working on an ordinance regarding setbacks of hazardous materials pipelines. They'll be coming to you, um, later this month in October. Um, also, there will be a text amendment in October, probably on the same agenda or a later agenda, um, from a citizen requesting to amend our code, um, to allow adaptive reuse of historic structures, structures that are on the National Register of Historic Places. Um, we've, it's actually pretty interesting. Um, there is a barn, it is the first barn in Farmstead constructed in Story County. It's on the National Register and it was for sale. Um, and the person wanting to buy it would like to do a museum there. Um, so we're doing a text amendment to facilitate that request. It's down by Huxley, so we're excited about that. Um, and then we're also doing a new substation, um, between Roland and McCall'sburg that will help, um, future growth of those communities and Nevada. Um, Alliant Energy has two substations in Roland and McCall'sburg, and those substations are limited in meeting new requirements. And so they are proposing a site between those two towns that'll, that'll help, um, future growth of those areas and resiliency of our electric grid. Um, next slide. And then our work program, we are doing pretty good on, um, construction and demolition landfill. That's what we've talked about today, so I'm glad, I've been working on that since I was an intern. Um, so I'm glad we're getting that checked off. And then an update on the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. We did send the letter requesting changes to Gilbert and, um, the City of Ames. Gilbert, I went to their city council meeting last night to present the letter and took questions on it. And they'll be taking action to review public comment and either agree with our requested changes or propose their own, um, either this month or early November. Ames will be doing the same on October 25th. Um, I will plan to attend that city council meeting as well. Um, and once we hear back from those two cooperators, I'll bring forward their requested changes. And we can talk about how we want to entertain them, if we're on the same page on certain issues or we want to have targeted work sessions to address some areas that we're still not, um, seeing consensus on. Um, we will also be bringing, um, our ordinance to protect environmentally sensitive areas forward. Um, after public outreach on that, we wanted to wait till harvest was over. Um, so we're going to do some public outreach meetings on that ordinance end of November, early December, and then bring that ordinance forward. It has gone through our Planning and Zoning Commission and the Constitution Board. Um, so that's upcoming. Any questions?
I don't right now.
Okay.
I guess my one question is, so interns that you have on, do you have them through the entire school year till next May then, or?
Yeah, one of them is on for the entire school year. Um, the other one does graduate in December.
Okay.
And what we've done, um, in those situations is kept them on while they're looking for, um, employment. Um, and that works pretty well because they're already trained. And then we'll probably, um, be looking for a full-time summer intern since they'll both have graduated.
Mm hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You have no other reports, any upcoming agenda items?
I don't.
No, I think I have none.
Now it's time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any item, any action on comments due to requirement, requirements of open meetings law, but might do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment and step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom? Seeing no one will close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor, Merkin, you want to go first?
Sure, I don't have a lot on my agenda for this week. I do have, oh, hold on a second. I think I do have, um, meeting of the Board of, uh, Second District Corrections Executive Committee, uh, Thursday afternoon and also then a meeting with, um, with a Randy Feenstra's, um, staffer with the Emergency Management Association, uh, Director. Um, some of the things I'm working on, um, I just might mention this, even though it's not coming out, I want people to get it on their calendar. On November 10th, the, uh, WMA for Headwaters itself, Skunk is having an open house, um, to look at the draft of our consultants', uh, assessment of that watershed. We're going to have two open houses that day. The first one is going to be in Story City at the Community Center over the lunch hour. The second one's going to be in Jewel in the evening. And the reason we chose those two locations is because about 98% of the acreage in the, in this watershed is in Story and Hamilton Counties. So we wanted to make sure that we were, we were, um, getting lenders. We've got a long list of people we're going to be inviting to this. We just want to talk with landowners about it, practices and what, what we know now about our watershed and what their part to play will be. So I'm really looking forward to that and we're going to get that input also from them, help finalize the study.
And both of those open houses are on the 10th?
They're both on the 10th. So when I get the, um, J E O, our consultant, just putting together the materials for that, when I get that, I'll forward them to you.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks. Guys are headed?
Yeah, I've got kind of a light week this week too. I do have on my calendar this afternoon, Board of Health has a meeting. I also have the, uh, Recorder's Recognition this afternoon. Tomorrow I have a children's mental health meeting. Um, and then Friday I have the AEDC Executive Committee Meeting. That's what I've got going on this week.
AEDC meeting?
Executive Committee Meeting.
Oh, okay. Um, all right, uh, I've got the Recorder's Recognition, um, also this afternoon. And then I have, um, a meeting, a SIRHA meeting this evening, strategic planning meeting, um, tomorrow I have a NACO Justice and Public Safety Policy Steering Committee meeting. Alternatives meeting on Thursday. I've got, uh, I'm attending the, um, Ames Chambers Manufacturing Breakfast on Friday morning, which is, I was surprised.
That noon, our meeting's at noon on Friday.
Oh, gotcha. And then Monday is, uh, Story County Open Oil Task Force meeting. Um, another symposium meeting and that, that is, that is it for Monday. So. With that, I move.
We adjourned?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.